Very good. So I will endeavor as always to be thorough and concise and you'll let me know if I'm failing at one or both of those, please, as always. I'll jump right in. I always set this up and say, you know, we've spent a lot of time looking at the drawing that you see there and the every other piece that came from the original Mark Lemon set. It's been an interesting process. I'll applaud Design and Construction Committee. I didn't give them credit at any other meetings because I felt like if anybody was going to take the heat, I'd take it first and not pass it off to them. But Design and Construction has done a tremendous amount of work over the last few months looking at this project and considering all of the pieces involved. So I want to compliment them. They've been incredibly helpful for our team in designing the new higher elementary school. You guys have seen this slide. Every time I've stood up here and presented a new elementary school, usually I talk about the first four bullet points as the mandates from the bond is the simplest way to think of it. It's that larger building supporting the increased capacity, the onsite parking, green space, architectural compatibility. And then usually we take this, we get feedback from the neighbors and I fill in more bullet points beneath there and they always say save more trees. That's been on every campus. I took a little bit of liberty here and kind of summarized a lot of feedback that we've received on hires. You well know, really the first one that's kind of the added piece that's unique to hires, this idea of courtyard space. Obviously, this was not a piece of the other campuses. It was important on this campus. So you'll see that in the images we show you. We've tried to honor that and actually reinvent that a bit in a way that I think makes better use of that sort of space. And then the all the other commentary, I think, rolls up on a kind of this bullet point of maintaining the neighborhood school. And that's a broad term, but sorry, wrong button. This is what I think people think when they think neighborhood school. This is, this is the imagery of hire and in every presentation I've done so far, generally people tend to agree with the idea that when you say hire, this is the imagery, not necessarily the Colgate side of the building, but really kind of the front door, the entry portion, the very residential scale, very simple and clean in its detailing with some really elegant touches, pretty specific to what I'll call an early Georgian style. Everybody says this is the SMU building. True, obviously SMU is recognized for Georgian. This is probably a little bit what you'd call earlier Georgian, which is usually a little simpler than you see on the SMU campus, a lot more stone ornamentation. That comes with a taller Georgian building. So we've tried to incorporate a lot of that as we've moved through, but I'll show you that in the images. And again, as Dr. Trigg said, and I'll remind you again, this is where we are today. When I get to the images, it's going to look like we are finished and ready to go. And I'll just remind you, this is kind of a pencils down exercise. Put the pencil down, show you where we are, gather feedback and start going toward the city process. So looking at site plan, I think I was here a few months ago discussing site plan with you guys. This was a version called 2.6. This is the site plan and the plan that we've moved forward with. Again, you see these blobs of Kinder playground and 1 through 4 playground. That's really just our attempt to say those are the approximate sizes of the current playgrounds. This is really a proof of concept image to say everything you see past the edge of that building essentially is now green space. To give you an idea of scale, the current building projects to about to this edge. So it gives you an idea of, and then the kindergarten wing, actually six, about in that same range. So in terms of green space, we've been through all that in the past. There's an oddly sized soccer field there only for the purpose of saying back in 2007 when the last addition was done, there was this, everybody called it the big field at hire. And that big field went away with the last addition. So I went back to the aerial photography from '07 and said, that was the big field back then. And it was that dimension because it was kind of constrained by buildings and playgrounds. The reality is now you have the opportunity to make the big field an even bigger field. This just kind of says, this is where we were back in '07, '08. Now we have a chance to gain even more green space back. As you'll see in the plan, the front, I talked about that front imagery for a reason. There's obviously a very strong connection with the symmetry and the balance of the front entry, the Caruth entry of hire. So you see that recreated here a bit. The back is where a lot of the change is and really wouldn't call it the back. It's the Colgate entry now because there's a great deal of entry that happens along that perspective and that would be the two-story portion of the building. You see the drive aisle on the center of the site here. This would be the entry ramp for the parking garage, keeping all parking and deliveries off of Pickwick, as we've talked about from the beginning, trying to keep all the things that have been on that side still on that side. There is still some work to be done with, as you know, now traffic, truck deliveries have to back into the street and then make several attempts to back straight into the higher side. I really don't think that's a long-term solution. So we're trying to have a pull-through like you have at UP now. It's very similar to what you see at UP. The difference is we have trees about every 22 feet on center. So we have to get very creative about kind of weaving between those so we can retain those, those green circles that you're seeing there are the existing trees on the site. This isn't a new landscape plan. This is what's there that we're working around. So the goal is to keep as much of that in place as we possibly can. I'll prepare you already. I made one mistake, but I left it in here because I did it for all the others. I was crazy enough to suggest maybe the sign would move to not to the left of the front door, but center of the front door. So just forgive that when you get to the render. I've already been told it needs to go back to the left of the front door, but that's an important element of the site plan, I was told. And then this really reflects what I'm calling Balto's courtyard, the courtyard that's to the left of the entry when you walk in, the space that's really used for parents and students to have lunch. It's adjacent to the lunchroom. So that courtyard piece that we talked about in the design objectives has been captured there. And really now I've added two arrival courtyards or outdoor learning spaces as well on the northern piece that are now not completely enclosed. So they give you a little bit more options for flexibility, I think. So starting at the level that only the teachers seem to care about, the garage level, the way to orient yourself on this, our goal is always to get between 80 and 90 subgrade parking spaces. Right now, we've got everything under the building footprint, which is the first time we've done that. At the other schools, you have a little bit that projects beyond. That may still move a bit, but in terms of efficiency financially, it makes a lot of sense to keep everything compact under the building footprint and of course, not under the classrooms. It'll be difficult to see when you jump, but this, this line above is actually a large hallway above and all the classrooms sit on the north side of that. So this is kind of under the core of the building and the easiest way to orient yourself, you notice right there, is the stair tower. And so when you move upstairs, there's that same stair tower. So that, that wall line actually steps back here. Without getting into each space by space, the teachers really wanted to go through space by space, but you probably are a little bit higher level on this. So I'll just say the, the front door area that you see, the salmon color across the bottom, that's the administration area. Again, that symmetry is reinforced even when you walk into the building. So you have really the functional side of admin on one side of the hallway and then teacher workroom, teacher support space on the, the other side with counselors as well. Your main entry when you walk in, you're immediately walking toward that Balto's courtyard space. And I think that's going to be a really unique, every campus has had kind of their unique thing. I think this becomes a part of the new definition of hires, that ability to walk into the building and still have daylight coming into the center. And directly across that courtyard is the library space. And now that library shares the view into that space and the daylight into that space as well. To your left in the green, you'll see the kitchen and dining. You saw your drive aisles, so that's no surprise to your left. The special programs in blue that you see in front of the dining to the south, that's the science. So now science can move up to the kind of the wooded area under the trees. And then over on the right side flanking that, the purple is our fine art. So that's, that's art and music. Art gets, I'm biased toward art. So art has the exterior view. Music has some windows, but the art really has the primary view of Colgate. Orange is gymnasium, same as you've seen in other places, a divisible gymnasium. And then the classroom pods are a little bit different here. Each one of them has been different so far. This is one of the changes that, working with DNC, we've made fairly recently. But you can see in this layout, the pod on your far right is special education. First grade would be center, kindergarten is on the far left. After some feedback we received in terms of traffic circulation at Thursday nights meeting, we probably need to have more conversation about what goes where in terms of special ed and kinder, in terms of where special ed students might get dropped off. I got some really interesting feedback about how well traffic is working on the campus this year and how this might, how we might want to swap those two. So we need to visit afterwards and see. So that may be one thing that you see different in the future, but the bottom line is those pods are set up the same as you've seen at the other campuses with minor variations. You do have these courtyard spaces between these wings as we've talked about entry. The reality is either this or this would probably be your primary entry in the morning for drop-off and delivery solely, well, not solely, but primarily because you really want parents to move as far to the east in that queue line as you possibly can. And if we, if we're allowing entry here, we may have queues, the queue may stop essentially at that. So there's still some work to be done before we get into the final traffic planning. But right now, we're considering that this would be a primary entry and this would be a primary entry in the morning. And we need to work through that from a security standpoint as well. And then obviously the front door entry is pretty straightforward, still on that same axial. And then upstairs, a little different than the other buildings, obviously, three pods and one central hallway. One of the other things we heard from Legacy and others was this idea of the internal circulation of hire is something that people cherish, the ability for students to kind of always be on the path of other students, siblings within the building. I think this begins to accomplish that very well. We gave a central stair tower. If you noticed on the ground floor, the library is at the base of this. So that stair kind of originates the library face and moves to the second floor. So you're in the central spine on the second floor. Now there's still a staircase at the end of each pod. I need those for egress. I don't know that they'd be used for daily. It depends. The principals are now using the buildings differently as they move through five and moving back into UP. But our goal has always been that a, a classroom area really owns their flex space, that there's not a need for another group to be moving through their flex space. So I'd certainly think second, third and fourth grade on that second floor really wouldn't have any traffic through there. And that becomes really kind of the extended living room space or flex space that you've seen working so well at five and at the new UP now. I didn't point out toilets, but I'll just say, we had a conversation with teachers and I may be adding more toilets, but I thought I had a lot of toilets. We'll, we'll work that through. But around that central stair, a little differently here also is really two sets of student restrooms on both floors, first and second floor. And the theory being that most of your progress during the day is up and down that main stair because you may be headed back to dining or you may be headed to the gym and really these become kind of central to the building. Of course, there are faculty restrooms throughout, but we always end up talking about storage and toilets in buildings. So we'll, we'll update you on that. I'm sure you'll be interested to hear how that turns out. Any questions on floor plan? And I've done this, this is the fourth time, so I feel like I didn't miss anything, but if I did, I'll remember it at some point or someone behind me who has seen this before will say it. So going back to start to begin the exploration on the exterior, we spent a great deal of time, not to keep repeating myself, but again, I think this is the imagery that when you think about the new hire, you really think about this as framing the elements of hire and it's really pretty straightforward. So as we work through the Design and Construction Committee, it's looking at those elements that people resonate with or connect with. The style is very simple. The ornamentation is very elegant, simply done, but I think there are key things that as we look at recreating the building and designing from the inside out, how does that outside begin to honor the neighborhood and the kind of the memory of this building? Some of the things are very specific to the style. For instance, multi-pane windows seems like a simple thing, but it's very specific to the Georgian style to have a nine over nine or a 12 over 12 window. So we feel like that's an, that's an integral part of having that same sort of look to the building. More detailed things like stone coping on these portions of the building. You've got raked roof and then a very simple stone coping trim. Of course, the cast iron ornamentation and the entry pediment. It has probably come to the end of its useful life, but it certainly is kind of the feature piece of it and the use of ornamental iron trim in a few areas. And then brick jack arches. I've done small architectural history courses over the last few days to brick jack arches just simply when the bricks blaze like this. And it's a special shaped brick. It can be mimicked a few different ways, but on this building, it's done in the truest form, which is a special shaped brick, taking that form with a simple stone keystone. And this is moving to that left module. This was the original library with of course, the working fireplace. The chimney is pretty specific to the style, even when you didn't have fireplaces, as Georgian has done these days, there's still sort of the fireplace elements to give it this vertical edge trim that's nice. But the rest of the building starts to happen on that left side. The rest of the building is a very simple stone coping and a simple roll-out course. That's just a brick stood on end. So the ornamentation here is not overdone and it feels like most of that kind of deferred originally to the front door because that's where kind of the punch was, so to speak. What you do notice in Lemon's original drawings, if you start to look at them as the, on the secondary entries, entries on the east and west, he started to use a little different language of fan windows. Those have kind of been overtaken over the years, but they're pretty strongly shown in the first two sets of documents that he did. And then even that stone coping continues and then I always joke about, the reality is he did jack arches on everything, but eventually he stood in front of a school board and must have been slightly over budget because there are also on the original building, not jack arches, they're just soldier courses over the windows. I'm not, not making excuses, but I do think it's interesting that on the front, it's this pure form of the jack arch and you turn the corner and it's not an addition, it's the original portion and it's a much simpler form of it. So I, I'll point that out. I don't hope to mimic that, but you start to see some of these elements on the exterior and you start to appreciate very simple elements that give the building this texture to it that I think is unique. So that is a good, a pure example of a jack arch with a simple keystone. And we'd like to recreate that. It just makes all the sense in the world. One that's much more subtle than most people don't see, and this actually runs all the way around the building and I'll turn that back off. Every six course on the building is what's called a header course. The brick is turned and run back in. Now, part of it's because the building was made of common brick and it was a way of tying the walls together, but it's just a very simple element. And every time this building's been added on to, every six course ends up with that simple header course. Pretty nice element to the style. Not a lot of flash to it, but when you really stop to look at the wall, it starts to add some texture and depth to it. So you now start to look at these elements a little bit different. You start to pick that out. On the renders, you're going to see a darker line of brick. I'm not proposing a black stripe of brick, but in order to convey it on the renders, you'll start to see, we'd like to have that same header course kind of on that module running around the building as well because it, I think it's really the attention to that detail that begins to set this apart at a smaller scale. And then the stone coping, I think you have lost over the years a little bit visually because stone turns to not looking like stone after a while. So those are the elements that I think that make up the building and that's, so I'm talking about, the image on the right is the expensive jack arch and the image on the left is the, kind of the value conscious alternative. Never has stood out and actually you would hardly, you'd be hard pressed to find anybody that's actually noticed that over the years, but still I thought it was interesting. I'm not attempting to say we're going to do this to save money. I just, I think it's an interesting feature from the original building. Before I jump to the exterior images and then give you some motion around the building, just reminding you of that floor plan because it's been such a part of the floor planning is really still thinking about how this would project to the exterior, not just on Caruth, honestly, but now on Colgate, spending a lot of time thinking about that. That symmetry is still being so strong on the Caruth side and being single story, we're very sensitive to how do you have a two-story element behind that with a one-story in front of it that doesn't look like the building was added on to. And so you'll see our first pass is starting to incorporate a lot of the same elements. We're up a little bit high here. I wanted this, this render up a bit off the ground so you'd start to see, you're starting to see a little bit of the dining room on the left and the gym on the right, but by no means are you going to see this two-story element kind of towering behind the single story. I think the scale has been adjusted well to bring that up. And you're starting to see some of those same elements again, the, the little jack arch with the keystone over the windows. I'm not sure that I can salvage the wrought iron at the front door, although I absolutely love it and it's really heavy duty dimensionally. We're still not sure how big our front porch is because we've gone back and forth on do we need a larger front porch? But I think there's a great opportunity to recreate kind of that look here. So that building, the brick becomes a very simple surface with a little bit of ornamentation and the front door really starts to read, kind of like it does now. And those two elements, remember I said, on your left and your right. So to your left in this image is the science room is this pod and then on that, the pod that you see on the far right becomes the, the art room. I did leave the flagpole front and center of the sidewalk so you can still play football, run across the sidewalk and around a flagpole, which nobody seems to have an issue with, but I'll put it right back there. And I did, like I said, went a little bit crazy here and put the sign up front, but I think, I think the information that I have received so far says it needs to go back to the left of the front door exactly as tall as it was before so we know how tall our children are all with the same. I get it, we can move it back. That's very straightforward. We may have to.
We may need to rebuild a little.
Yeah. We may have to rebuild a portion of that sign. As beloved as it is, the center portion has shown a little bit of wear, so we, we may have to go ahead and budget to recreate the center of the sign, but the perimeter seems to be holding up pretty well. Moving to the classroom side of the building, starting to take some of that same language and take it into a two-story element now. This gives you an idea of a classroom pod. So this would be really if your back was to Pickwick and Caruth. So I mentioned those stair towers at the end of every classroom pod, so you're seeing really that's that door. And here's the trick, again, I said, we don't really want those to be entry doors, but they need to be addressed in a way. So we spent a lot of time with DNC, honestly, going back and forth on these doors and ornamentation on them. So there may be some shift in there as we work through those details, but as of now, we've, we've started to adopt sort of that, remember I said, the fan windows are over secondary? So we'd like to mix the rectangle with a little bit of fan windows here and there to, to break that facade a bit. And really the goal of that, the piece that you see over the door is really to give one, depth to the facade and two, some covering over that door. Because I do imagine on a rainy day, it's going to be very tempting to just shoot out that door, no matter what the traffic control plan is. So if nothing else, be planning for it. This image is a little false too, I have to tell everybody, because if I were to draw the tree that I've talked about before on that northwest corner, if I were to draw the tree, you wouldn't actually see the building. So it's actually been in all of these, we've removed most of the existing trees. You can see the building. It's a little disingenuous because there's some pretty mature trees, especially along the west side, obviously, and in this corner. But again, we're trying to give you an idea of what the building would look like. So this module of these three classrooms would start to look like this, a simple approach. The classrooms to the left is a classroom, to the right is a classroom. So you're starting to get an idea of how much glass those classroom windows have. There's, in the style, there needs to be sort of this balance and proportion to the window spacing. We still need to work through how we get all of our teaching space in there and all of our casework in there. But for right now, I think these corner offices, so to speak, these corner classrooms, really I think could be really nice spaces. You're starting to get a hint of those arrival zones or outdoor learning spaces between the two, and I'll show you those. Our thought is, we, you remember these are the spaces between the classroom wings that in order to keep, to avoid these from being just leftover spaces, to really treat them as special spaces so that you could use them for outdoor learning spaces during the day. I would think from a security standpoint though, you might want to secure that at a certain point. So what we're suggesting here is kind of that same light iron work feeling that you had on the front of the building, bring a little of that back to the back. I think it helps to offset the size of the building around it and frames that courtyard space as something special, not just really an alley between two building spaces. And you've got, this is our first pass at kind of landscaping and arrangement there. I'm sure this will take some changes as we work through this. So you have sort of those interior entry doors. So remember I said, if that one door on the far right of that image before could be an entry door, this would be sort of that entry door. And you set both of those courtyards up the same way, I would believe. Maybe not. There's some flexibility to have one be more organic and one more rectilinear like this. Moving to the Pickwick side, so now the church is at your back. This gives you an idea of that classroom. So really this is the classroom pod. So the, the transition between the two-story height and the single story actually happens as two-story and then dining becomes your space in between and the first story. So that's one of the reasons you're not seeing that mass directly behind it. We've been able to move those masses so that it's single story, not a story and a half two, move up to the second story version. And here you'll see the teachers dive ramp. And again, you're missing a lot of trees that would be on the left of this image, but just for the sake of clarity. And then moving around the Tulane side, so moving with Tulane to your back now, you're seeing to the far left of that image, that art classroom again. The music classroom steps up a bit, a little bit higher than the gym. And then again, that secondary, kind of that fan window language being used around the gym side. As we work through ornamentation, we may have some tweaks here and there. Windows may move here and there, but I think we've gotten to where we're comfortable with the module, the size, the spacing of the windows, because that's, that's fairly important in this style because a lot of it depends on kind of the rhythm of the massing. And then Balto's courtyard will look dramatically different when I bring this back to you. You'll see a little bit better in the rendering. You can see him right there in the center. He's a little far off in the image. Originally, we had this envisioned, in this image, you would be walking through the front door. And as you take that front portico gable that you walk through now, we'd like to project that straight through essentially. So that's a vaulted ceiling that you'd walk through and that's that vault you're seeing on the left side. The library's across from it, but honestly, I think we may want to break a little bit more with a completely traditional look inside here and put as much glass in this space as we possibly can. It's across from the dining on one end. It ring, it's ringed by corridor on all sides except the library. This would be a fantastic opportunity to just open this up and get as much direct light and borrowed light into that space as we can. So after floating this to the last three presentations, I have had no one say that it needs to feel more enclosed. If anything, it could feel a little bit more open. So I think you'll see that change. We were just happy we got the dog in because that was not an easy thing.
Well, you blew it on the sign.
Yeah, I blew it on the sign. So if you watch him, you'll see him spend 90 degrees in the animation to turn to the camera if you watch carefully. So they were very proud of that too, the team that did the render. So this just puts a little bit of motion to it because it helps you understand massing a little bit better. Again, starting a little bit higher up off the ground with the sign in the completely wrong spot, but that's, and maybe that entry arrival courtyard or the entry piece right at the curb could still be that red brick paver. We're suggesting that on the porch as well. That's kind of a nice touch that's specific to hire, that that porch is a red brick paver, not just the porch, but the steps as well. So again, I don't know that I can salvage, this is the current iron work. Don't know that that's salvageable, but it certainly is recreatable iron work. And I think that's, that's really what helps to define what makes higher, higher. You'll see some of the same images. The only stone indulgence we have here is stone keystones with the windows, simple stone stills, and then one simple stone water table band that runs around the building and a little bit ornamentation on those two front pieces. You'll see Balto turn 90 degrees right there. So this gives you an idea that on your right, you're seeing that gable of the front door projecting through, which gives you a nice volume for a single story. Our goal is to still get a feeling kind of arrival and volume. The library here would be on your left and in reality, there wouldn't be this built-in seating. This would again, would be more of the dining courtyard. So this would actually be more tables and chairs and a little bit more glass is our Again, moving back to a classroom module, I don't know where you find the purple flowers, but you have to have them because they really make the image. You'll notice them on all of it. This does give you a sense, to the left, you're seeing if you were to have parents come around the end of the building, that's kind of the walkway around that portion of it. And you start to get a feel for the mass and the size of the space. When we, when we brought the courtyard model in virtual reality and showed it to people and you can put on the goggles, you really get a feel for the size of the space and it's a nicely proportioned space. I think it'd be a very, very nice piece to the building. Notice we haven't put the gates all the way out at the front edge. That feels a little too institutional, so we're proposing move those back a bit and have kind of a private zone and a public zone. That'd be on the edge of that. And again, they'll still be detailing to work through here, but you're seeing the suggestions of that header course run through there. Looks pretty stripy in this image, but you get the idea. And then moving along the Tulane side again. Gym will still have its direct entry out to the field. If we can keep the parking garage under the building, then we literally can walk out of the gym and be on grass, which is a little unusual at the others. We've had a little bit of parking garage, so we have roof deck over the top of it. And then here, those three windows that you see over the parking ramp, those are actually, we were able to get direct light into the large group instruction space, which is part of that dining space.